Thank you. Everyone, it's nine o'clock, so I'll call this meeting to order. Today is Thursday, October 16th, 2025. This is our regular meeting of the governing board. If you're able to physically stand, please join me as we say the pledge of allegiance. Thank you. Again, welcome to the governing board regular meeting. I'm Christine Novello. I am a governing board director and the president of the governing board for this fiscal year. And around me, we have a quorum of directors. We have eight directors present. Director Williams is absent, but we certainly have quorum. We have seven of us here in person, and we have Director Forsey online on Zoom. Good morning, Director Forsey.
Good morning.
Thank you. I'll start by reading our meeting procedures as we do in all of our meetings, governing board and its committees. The governing board and its committees conduct all their meetings in compliance with Arizona Planned Community Association Open Meeting Laws per ARS 331804 and in concert with RCSCW bylaws, policies, and standing rules. Parliamentary procedures, as outlined in the most recent edition of Robert's Rules of Order, will also be followed in all meetings as appropriate, consistent with bylaw 3.07, Procedures for Owner-Member Meetings, and Standing Rules Number Two and Number Three. So that being said, we are moving on to item two on our agenda, approval of minutes. We have directors, the minutes for the September 18th regular meeting available. I presume we've all had a chance to look at those. Any comments, changes, concerns? So do I have consensus to move these forward? Great, so we'll approve those minutes and move into new business. This morning, we're very happy to welcome a few representatives of the Maricopa County Association of Government or MAG for short. They're conducting a transportation study, and we have Adina Lund, who is here, I believe, will be making or leading the presentation for us. They just want to take a few minutes to update the community on what they're doing. So ladies?
Excellent. Thank you, President and members of the board. My name is Estella Hollander, and I'm actually with AECOM, who's the consultant leading this process on behalf of Maricopa Association of Governments. We have Adina Lund with MAG, and then my name is Estella Hollander, and I'm the deputy project manager for this project. So this project, we're just kicking it off. It's called Sun Cities on the Move. And today, we'll introduce the project, identify the key components, the study process, and some of the outreach methods that we'll be using, the communication that will be happening throughout the duration of the project. We'll go over the timeline as well as the upcoming outreach, and then we'll have some time for questions as well. So this project, again, this is on behalf of Maricopa Association of Governments or MAG, they are sponsoring this project. And really, the purpose of this project is to evaluate and explore potential improvements to transportation options in both Sun City as well as Sun City West residents, based on the unique mobility needs of the population in these areas. So why first is identifying the transportation needs and challenges in these two areas, really trying to understand what type of transportation problems we're trying to solve, understanding what existing challenges exist today, and yeah, and then explore a variety of different options for that. What we understand right now is, yeah, shopping is largely located outside of the communities as well as some essential services, like medical services are located on the edge. So wanting to understand what are some of those challenges in trying to access those essential services. We're going to explore a variety of different transportation options. There's about a dozen different options identified, and there might be even additional options looked into based off outreach as we begin this process. We're also, the goal of this is really to enhance the mobility and address the safety issues for the, for both Sun City as well as Sun City West. So key components of this project, first is that understand, understand the transportation needs and challenges in these communities, then evaluate range of transportation alternatives. We're looking at a lot of different options, anywhere from a monorail to, to like a circulator or a bus service. So really wanting to see what all the different options are, really kind of leaving no stone unturned to see what the feasibility of these, these options are to serve both these communities. Identify then a preferred alternative. So we'll go through an analysis, looking at the feasibility of these modes. How much could they cost to implement the timeline? All of these factors will play into our decision-making as well as receiving community input. So we're definitely, the goal of this is to have a robust community input process for each technical milestone of this, this project. Document, so make sure to document the findings as well, as well as the methodologies for each milestone, as well as the decision-making that goes along with that. In addition, we'll develop an implementation strategy. So right now, there is not funding for these transportation options, so we'll look into, you know, what that timeline could look like, as well as what some potential funding options might be as well. Study process and outreach, so in general, yeah, right now, we're at this data collection, so we just kicked off this project. So trying to understand and get a lot of different data as well as some public inputs. We are developing a survey right now, which should be coming out later this fall. Step two is develop that project need, goals, and objectives. So take all this information, really hone into, again, what are some of the transportation problems in both the Sun City and Sun City West areas? Alternatives evaluation, we'll be having another survey effort that goes along with this. We'll be having a statistically valid survey during this step to really hone in and get some additional feedback on these transportation alternatives. And then concept development, that is basically what is going from kind of these large available options and then honing it in on something more specific and coming up with a preferred alternative. That implementation planning, what would be a timeline for potential implementation as well as, again, exploring some potential funding opportunities, and then that final report. And as I've noted, we'll be having public involvement at key milestones throughout this whole project. Communication, so we will be developing a dedicated study webpage on MAG's website that will be developed soon, hopefully within the next week or so. We're definitely going to rely on the existing Sun City and Sun City West channels. There, especially Sun City West, there is already a robust way of communicating through the newsletters and social media and email platforms, so wanting to rely on those channels to share information for like upcoming surveys, and we'll have pop-up events and things like that. We'll be developing outreach materials, like fact sheets. A hybrid approach will be definitely utilizing both paper copies, so the, both the digital and the hard copy of like the newsletters. And then for pop-up engagement and dedicated community open houses, we will be joining some existing events that are going on as well as having some specific to the project. So, and we'll be make sure to advertise those again through some existing communication platforms that exist today. And then document and have transparency throughout this process. So make sure that we are documenting, you know, how many people we've talked to, how many people attended the outreach events, and making sure we're documenting any findings from the outreach events as well as the technical analysis throughout. Study timeline, so again, we're, we just started, so we're still in that kind of fall-to-winter phase of the data collection. We will be having an initial public survey and pop-up events later in November and early December. Then in winter through spring, we'll look at these transportation alternatives, spring to summer, developing the concept development, and then summer to fall of '26, go more into the implementation planning. So we should have our final report of winter of 2027, so this is an 18-month process, so it is a long process. There's, again, plenty of opportunities to, to stay involved and to participate in this planning process. Definitely wanting to take advantage of the fall and winter months coming up. We know that a lot of people might leave Sun City and Sun City West in the summer months, so just wanting to make sure that we're capturing and honing in on, on the upcoming time to get as much feedback as we can for this initial phase. And upcoming outreach, so we will be attending the newcomers' open house next week at Sun City West, and then we'll also be developing a public survey, that the goal is to have that active in November, and we'll have some associated pop-up events in both, we'll probably have two in Sun City West and two in Sun City to just try and capture as much feedback and talk to people during those pop-up events. And more information, we'll definitely make sure to use the existing channels to share once we have more details on those pop-up events and the survey. And that concludes my presentation, or our presentation. Let me know if you do have any questions. I have Adina's contact information on here if you do have any additional questions or comments.
Great, thank you so much, Estella. Really appreciate that. It's important for us to try to get the word out to, to all. So Stephen, are there any other items that you wanted to add from an association standpoint before we ask questions?
Yeah, no, so I just, you know, MAG approached us and wanted to be able to get the word out, and because it is of importance to our community, we thought we'd have them come out and, and make the presentation and, and just as a platform to be able to make the board aware of what's happening and then get the word out in our community. Do you want me to, there is a comment on there, and?
No.
We'll, we'll get to audience comments after the director comments. Thank you so much. So yes, director comments, we'll start with you, Director Turner.
Yeah. Who is MAG? I can, I can, I can make, I can guess, but you know, what's the one paragraph description?
And that is the question that our?
And what, do you have any authority or agency to actually implement this, or are you just making a recommendation back to a, to a different organization?
Thank you. MAG is the Maricopa Association of Governments, and we are actually made up of representatives from all of the cities and the county for Maricopa County. And our funding comes from the Transportation Sales Tax that was recently extended by the voters. So when a study comes to be, a lot of times, the government, the legislator has appropriated the funds and needs to assign it to an agency to study it. Many times, those studies go to MAG. Sometimes they go directly to Valley Metro or to McDOT. This study was assigned to us. We are working with Valley Metro and McDOT on this study, so they're partners with us. Once we prepare the study, then we have to, of course, work with the county because you reside in the county. So hopefully that answers the question.
Thanks for the extra information, and I believe we can also, is your website here, azmag.gov?
That is correct.
Dr. Pyoskovsky, any questions? Dr. Chatten?
Yes, I appreciate the fact that you're doing this study. And my question probably is more associated with transportation in general in Maricopa County, but how is BNSS's proposed facility up at Whitman, will that have any impact on this? Because I'm assuming the traffic is going to be, if, if it goes through, the traffic is going to be phenomenally increased, and just, is MAG going to, has MAG officially opposed that facility, or have they stayed quiet on that?
As far as I know, MAG would, the executive committee of MAG, which is made up of the various cities, they would have to vote on that topic. I don't believe it has come before MAG as far as this study is concerned. We are looking at 2050 traffic volumes, and so if that project is moving forward, that will be captured in the update for future traffic volumes. And so that would be seen in our updated models of what the traffic is projected to be in that year.
Well, it seems if we're dealing with traffic for Sun City West and the whole county, that it would be proactive to be considering that now and taking a stand for the county. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any, Dr. Schlemmer?
Thank you. Thank you for this morning's presentation. I have, I have two questions, and I'll start with the first one. You already mentioned some of the groups that you're working with, you know, on a broader level. Transportation has been an issue here for a while, and there have been various groups within Sun City and Sun City West that have been trying to tackle that program, problem. Have you, have you reached out, and if so, which groups within our communities are you in connection with or exploring potentially being involved in the effort?
Thank you for that question. We are actually meeting with PORA right after this, and so they're going to brief us on the transportation committees that exist, and we'll be planning on attending those meetings when possible and making sure, once again, they have a vast background of the needs of the community and will help us to further understand the concerns. We are also working with Sun City, their Shoah community as well, so we have a meeting with them later this morning. So we're trying to hit all, all the right bases. Luckily, we've had some really great help of people guiding us to the right agencies and the right committees, because you guys are kind of complicated. So, yes, but it's great because there's a lot of involvement. So we're really hoping, because of how involved all of your residents are, we will get some great feedback as we go forward.
Excellent. I'm glad to hear the two that you mentioned. My second question is, you know, obviously, at some point, if you come up with a proposal, this has to go forward to, you know, the Board of Supervisors, or whatever the correct term is there, and whatever, to get funding and to implement, and that's always the big challenge, right? Especially in a rapidly growing county like Maricopa. Do you have a sense now of what the level of engagement is with the decision-makers who ultimately are going to decide the fate of whatever you come up with?
Thank you for that question. Having McDOT, Maricopa County DOT, as part of our project team will help to make sure that we're including the right people, and then they should be informing the people further up the chain of command at the right points. I think right now, at this point, since we're just kicking off, I don't think any communication has been made with the Board of Supervisors, and that would come further along as we start to get towards some type of options for the study.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Director Schlemmer. Last but not least, on the, yes.
Put that on my tombstone, last but not least.
We'll start with you next.
On one of the slides you had, you mentioned halfway through the session, conducting these workshops, and I'm just curious, who's going to be included in those workshops? Will you be including members of the community, business members of the community? Who will be included in those workshops?
Yeah, the goal of these kind of like pop-up events is, they'll always be in tangent with our survey efforts, and the goal of these is to get members of the public, so we'll be in very public locations like the library or other places where we know we'll receive foot traffic, and as well as advertise these pop-up events to include people. If there are specific stakeholders, we can make sure to reach out to them as well to make sure that they know of these pop-up events, and we are getting that feedback in this process.
Thank you.
Rudy? Dr. Graham, excuse me.
Thank you for the presentation. To the best of your knowledge, we've been here over 45 years. Has such a study ever been done here before? Because if it has, our demographics really don't change much from the way we were back in 1980 as to now, as to what the needs would be. I'd be interested to see if the responses from prior years match what you get in this study.
Thank you for that question. There was a study, there's actually, I think, been two studies done somewhat recently. The last one I'm familiar with was done in 2019 into 2020, which unfortunately was into the COVID era, so the response rate was not wonderful. After COVID, also, people might have changed their perspective about public transportation. The other part that has changed is there's a lot of different mobility services that are offered now and have kind of been tested in communities, like the circulator buses are starting to be used in different communities. We ride, there's various micro-transit solutions that they call them, even the Uber and Lyft is becoming more and more prevalent. So those would be the changes that really have modified, and then the willingness for people to use them, because some people, when it's new, maybe aren't interested, but now that they've been around, they're more interested in using different available options.
Thank you, excellent. Oh, another, Director Pyoskovsky?
It's not really for you ladies, it's really for Mr. Earl. Will we give them access to advertise and rec news and e-news for these pop-up, pop-up events?
Yeah, when they, when they approached us about this, we, we did commit that we would provide avenues for them to get the information out to our community members because it's important for all of our communities. So absolutely, we'll be using whatever means we can to help them advertise these events, as well as, again, we referred them, she mentioned to PORA, who also will be pushing, I would assume at least, be pushing that information out as well.
Thanks. Anything else from our directors? How about from our residents? I know we have one online that will answer, but is there anybody in the room that would like to ask a question? I'll go first online then. Resident Gary Bach, 135435, asked, can we hear more information about what MAG is? So I believe the director questions helped. I also typed in the website address and Adina's email address as well, so if there are questions to learn more about that, stay tuned to all of those channels that you outlined. Come to newcomers' open house next week, of course. You can hear more and talk to people there, and, and stay in touch through PORA as well. Should be a lot of opportunities. Anything, any other questions from residents in the room?
I have one question.
Ma'am, I'm sorry, you'll just need to come to the microphone so that they can capture it on the YouTube tape, if that's okay, and it's all the way over here. And when you do get there, take your time, there's no rush. When you do get there, please give us your name and your rec card number, and then you can write those in when you're done asking the question. Thank you.
My rec card number up. My name is Valerie Knutson, and I have a question. You mentioned that you're working with Metro Valley Transport. Are you considering going like from Phoenix here, back and forth, transportation that would go that far, especially with persons with disabilities?
The goal of the study is really to listen to the needs of the community.
Okay.
Because if we have, obviously, a large interest in some type of mobility, then there's a lot more emphasis placed on what the need is. If the vast majority of people are really interested in being able to get to all the rec centers within their community, and they're really looking at more of a local solution, then that kind of changes the direction we're headed. But that's why we need to hear from you to really understand what you're looking for.
Thank you.
Do I need you on my number now?
You can, you can write it down, when you look it up and write it down for us before you sit back down. Thank you so much. Any other questions from residents in the audience? Then thank you again to, to Adina and Estella and all the folks at Maricopa Association of Governments. Thanks for bringing them here, Stephen. Move on now to agenda item 3.02. We have received our annual audit report that was presented at the Budget and Finance Committee meeting earlier this week. So I'll turn this over to BNF Chairperson, our Treasurer and Director, Ann Becknell. Could you please put your microphone up?
I apologize. I'd like to make the motion. I move that the governing board accept the FY 2024-25 Clifton Larson Allen Audit Report per RCSCW policy.
Do I have a second? Director Schlemmer? So, so Ann, why don't you, excuse me, Director Becknell, could you tell us a little bit more about the, the findings of the audit report and the recommendation of the committee?
I think that the audit was very straightforward. The, we had absolutely no adjustments or changes from the audit committee, from, from the audit. There were a few questions about how some of the, quote, "other AR" maybe was broken down, and we resolved that this morning in our discussions. So I think with all those things combined, the committee itself accepted the, the audit, and I think I feel very comfortable with it today to accept it as well.
Thank you. I noticed as well the, the fact that it's an unqualified opinion. There are several different ways that an audit firm can come up with, I think there are four or five different possible outcomes to a standard CPA audit that's conducted. That is the best and highest and hardest to obtain, right? The unqualified opinion is the, when I say hardest, it's the most difficult to meet those, those guidelines, and we've done so now. Cliff, I think this is our second unqualified opinion in a row, right? That's really, I, I think that's pretty unusual, and, and in a good way, by the way. This means, again, calling out the great work of not just This means, again, calling out the great work of not just the accounting team and finance team, but it's really overall processes to ensure that we're in compliance with those processes. So congratulations to you and the team. Any questions or comments, concerns from directors before we put it to vote? Director Chatten?
Thank you. I don't want this taken the wrong way because I have full faith and confidence in the Budget and Finance Committee. But I'd like a copy of that audit, if I might. And I think all Board Directors should have a, receive a copy of that audit just for their information.
Absolutely. Director Chatten, that's, you go to the Budget and Finance Committee meetings, the audit report is there and it will go, assuming we approve, this will go on file. So we can certainly add it to, to our specific agenda, but we can just, you can just navigate there and the full report is available for everybody, not just directors, but everybody in the association.
Possible to get a printed report?
I can't see any reason why not. I'm trying to remember the length of it. Is it really long? Oh.
The, the audit report, the fully executed signed audit report will be here in the next week or so. So what you have online is an unexecuted draft. There are no changes to the draft. But once we have that, that will then be posted on our website for anyone to peruse or print or do whatever. And then we can certainly provide copies to the Board members for sure.
Great, thank you.
We'll take a, we can take a poll after the fact for directors who, who wish to have a printed copy of the executed report once it's available. Director Turner?
I actually sat in the back at the Budget and Finance Committee and, and watched the presentation from the auditors. And I also had a quick scan down the draft beforehand. And I was looking for the, the bits where the auditors had requested that changes were made into the accounts or some updates to controls, that financial controls within the organization. And I was very pleased to see that I couldn't find any. And then the verbal report that we got from the auditors to the Budget and Finance Committee was, was very good and very positive. And so I'd like to echo the comments that have been made here about, you know, to the General Manager and to Cliff and to all of his staff, about how well things seem to be run, especially when every now and again, one sees on social media that there are people out there who think something must be going on. Well, not according to our auditors. And they appear to be very thorough in their approach. So, thank you.
Yeah, and building on it again, I think it's worth, it's worth noting, it's, having some healthy skepticism is fine. This annual audit process enables all of us in the association, all of us owner members, Board members and staff to just get that reassurance that things are fine. And what I was alluding to, some of us with a little bit of, if you have that background, you're aware, it's not, certainly not impossible to receive that unqualified opinion, but it's something to really strive for, to see that kind of, you know, really know, they still would have rendered an unqualified opinion in some cases, even with a few minor changes and so forth, but there really weren't any. So it's a testament to some solid practices. And now our job as a board is to ensure, and the staff, to ensure that it keeps up. Anything else from the, from the Board? Questions from our residents here or online? And I don't see any online, so Director Becknell, if you could please reread that motion one more time?
I move that the governing board accept the FY 2024-25 Clifton Larson Allen Audit Report per RCSCW policy.
Thank you. We'll do a quick roll call vote on this. We'll start with Director Turner.
Yes.
Director Pyoskovsky?
Yes.
Director Graham?
Yes.
Director Chatten?
Yes.
Director Schlemmer?
Yes.
And Director Becknell?
Yes.
Director Fossey, Forcy, excuse me, or Fossey?
Yes, no, not Fossey. Thank you.
Thank you. No, I know, forgive me. Still a little lacking in coffee. So that's a unanimous approval for that motion to approve. The governing board has approved the audit report. Thank you so much. Move on to, let's move on to our next agenda item, which is 3.03, excuse me. We'll talk next, we'll get a little update from Anne about what we do next because we are due for contract renewal to select an audit firm. So 3.03, Director Becknell?
Thank you. During our Budget and Finance Committee meeting this last Tuesday, we identified the audit firm selection committee to help with the RFP, the review and the selection for the next audit group. The next audit group would be for a five-year period versus the three-year period we had. And those RFPs are due to go out probably the first part of November. And we'll be working together in concert with the finance group, as well as Mickey Jacobs, John Klein and myself.
Excellent. So this will be a working group, right? That you guys will put together to officially, we don't do subcommittees, we call them working groups. So yes, so great. And so that the Board's aware, our bylaws require us to have the selection process complete in January. So that's the reason why this group is off and running and moving quickly. We can look toward having a recommendation from Budget and Finance at the start of January or the end of December. Any questions on the process? Questions from our residents? Then great, thank you so much for that quick update. Director Becknell? We'll move on to 3.04. These are going to be, we'll do a couple of quick committee updates. So just a real brief update, no actions really coming out of most of these, but we'll start with our properties chairperson, Director John Chatten, please.
Thank you. Property Committee has completed three tours of the rec centers. We've done Palm Ridge, we've done Beardsley, we've done Kuntz. We do them on consecutive Tuesday mornings. We have at least two additional tours coming up for upper and lower RH Johnson. And we may add another tour for the metal shop if we can't fit that in some other place. And then after discussions, after some of our tours, Holly McCurdy, who's a member, Jim Scott, who's a member, and myself met with Kyle Hockman and Katie O'Grady to discuss how we can better get maintenance issues to Russ Bolton, Boston, sorry. It was proposed that an email be created that would go directly to Russ and create a maintenance ticket. Russ would then create a spreadsheet to track maintenance issues that would also show the status of those issues. I could then report that status to my committee on a monthly basis. I think in the past, all the issues that were identified during our tours always got to the people who needed to take care of them. And in general, they were taken care of, but we didn't necessarily get a report back to the committee. We're only a week into this new email, so the jury's still out on just exactly how this is going to work in the long run. Also, while we're doing our tours, we're identifying additional amenities that will be proposed during our master planning process. We've already identified several things that we think would be kind of cool to have. So we'll identify those and hold them for the master planning process. That's it.
Thanks, Director Chatten. I think it's a, I think it'd be worthwhile, we'll, at the end of every governing board year, we get a report from the committee. So at the very least, we'll hear from you via the committee in terms of how that worked, whether that was a worthwhile improvement. If there's anything that you need to update us on earlier than that, then by all means. But it's, it's great to try new things. And if it doesn't work, you can try something else. So any other, any questions for Director Chatten? Questions from our residents? And I see none online. We can always circle back to those. If you think of something later, we can come back to those at the very end of the meeting. We'll move on to 3.05 then, to our Sports Pavilion Committee Chairperson, Director Jolene Pyoskovsky.
Thank you. My report basically is, at our September 11th meeting, we had a resident come and ask us about our bylaw, which was 4.18.17. Basically, it said in there that it is extended a senior non-resident. So we looked at our policies in our bowling, and we just have non-resident. So I have directed all of my committee members who are reviewing policies to put senior non-resident, so it is in compliance with our bylaw. And then after that, it would be 45-plus years of age, because that is our age limit at the bowling alley. So that's what I have done. I'm just letting you guys all know, we're trying to make our policies in compliance with our bylaw. And then Policy BO2, we've looked at it because non-resident was not in there, so there's no redlining. And the committee has said it's good to go.
Excellent. No changes on that?
Correct.
Excellent. So as we move forward and we see some of the proposed changes to those policies, I believe the, there might be some questions about what happens next. We need to ensure the governing board, of course, will review and approve. Anything that is going to be changed in a policy would require our legal counsel to take a quick look at. So, so one of the questions that a couple of the other directors have asked is in terms of what's the appropriate order of operations, for lack of a better phrase. It can sometimes slow the process down a bit to bring things to the governing board to look at all the words before legal has reviewed. But I know that a couple of us really want to ensure, like you just did, that each of the potential changes for the policies come to the board for some comment before they go out to legal, because there is an expense associated with legal review. So I'm pointing all this out to ensure that when, Director Pyoskovsky just gave us a quick update, if there are any concerns with what she and her team are going forward on, please speak out now if you feel that that is not a good move. Otherwise, the next step for her will be, once these are redlined, we will put them to legal. Director Becknell?
Yeah, I, I have kind of a big concern because the Budget and Finance Group has 14 or so policies. That's quite a few. And in our meeting this past week, or this week, we identified, we made it through our first seven policies in about an hour. And we're coming back on November 4th to do the other seven policies. But we've identified at least three that we know need to be changed. And we've identified another two that could use, let's just call it some wordsmithing to sort of put them, you know, in a little bit cleaner order to make it easier to read. And so my concern is, I fear that my, my group might, might have the largest expense and without having at least presented it to the board to get the board's agreement that the types of changes that we are seeking or looking to make and get their approval and then let legal give us the final legal input and then come back and make the vote. I know that it may add an extra month or two to the cycle, but I'm kind of, you know, more in line with, I'd rather spend the money knowing that it's going to a right place than to do it the other way around, right? In excessive speed.
And, and I believe there are several other directors who may have a similar view, correct? I see some nods. So there's no hard and fast policy or procedure here. I would, as Director Pyoskovsky just did, I would encourage you to come to the next workshop, each of you who are chairing a committee. If you already know that there are a couple of policies that your committee will be recommending for redline for changes in content, give a quick update when you have that so we can then, as a board, weigh in and give you the assurance that yes, we believe it would be worthwhile proceeding forward. That way, you're, we're not wordsmithing the redlines, the words you've chosen, but more giving you and all the committees the go-ahead to move forward. Yes, it looks like this is something that is a worthwhile endeavor. Does that make sense? Or does it, does it capture your concern?
Right. We've tried to break our policies down for things that are very content or substantive changes or additions or modifications to the policy versus things that say, well, we should capitalize this or put a comma there, you know, or just make it slightly, you know, more readable. So I just, I really would like to get a, a pass before we go out because each of these policies can cost us anywhere from $1,500 to $2,000 for the legal fees just to review and give us the legal wording review of the document.
Right. No, I think it's, again, I concur. Director Chatten?
Yeah, I think when we're looking at policies, I don't think time is of the essence. We're not in a hurry with these. And I, I think that the board has to look at those. And I think that the committees, in my opinion, if you want to do some wordsmithing to make it more relevant or easier to read, I think we should do that before it goes to an attorney. So appreciate that.
Yeah, and Director Chatten, just, there, there actually is a timeline in our bylaws that we, that we do need to have those bylaw, that all the policies reviewed for, and presented to the governing board by January. So if this does extend much beyond that, it's something that we would be aware of. We can make a concerted effort. I would give you the go-ahead to move forward another month. But when you're saying there is no time, there is a timeline. So, so, so moving forward and also a logical timeline in that we do spend a lot of governing board time focusing on our budget discussions and some of those concerns as we approach the second half of our working year. So in any event, keep the timeline in mind. But I would say back to this, this point, to Director Pyoskovsky, my point was, I believe you're coming to us saying, these are the essence of the changes we're going to make. If there are concerns now for the changes that Director Pyoskovsky and her committee are going to make, this is the time to speak up so that she would know. Otherwise, we were, we are telling her, yes, go ahead, please proceed forward with those, I think it's four, policy changes. Correct. And I'll have all the redlines at our workshop. Is that what you want me to do? If they're ready for review, we'll talk about, if, as long as the governing board is okay with the concept, you would then, when they're ready, we would have them presented first through, we're saying, go forward, get legal review. And then the redlines would come to workshop. For all the other committees, you would do something similar in that you would come to, I would imagine, our November 7th workshop with, these are the policies that we would, we're considering updating and why. I know that Budget and Finance will probably be ready with most of those by then, judging by where you are, so. And golf is also making some very big progress on most. So, does that make sense? Director Schlemmer?
Thank you. I do want to throw a word of caution here, and that is that what we don't want to do is create a process that makes the entire flow of policy changes more cumbersome. I totally agree with the approach that we are outlining, but what I would encourage us as a board to think about is, when it comes to the workshop, that is the point where if we think there need to be changes in wording or whatever versus what is presented, we do those there. Because what we don't want to do is then send it off to legal for review, legal then sends it back with their review, maybe they make a few minor changes, maybe they make no changes, and then suddenly we're wordsmithing again. You know, because then we're going to have to be sending it back to legal. And so it's going to be a mindset change for us, but at the workshop review, we have to become comfortable with what's proposed and what we're sending to legal so that when it comes back, it's a routine vote unless there's a dramatic change from legal. Otherwise, we've made the process worse.
Understood. And that's, again, it's something that we're just going to have to see how things go moving forward. Director Becknell?
One of the questions or concerns I have is that some of the policy statements that are in Budget and Finance, as an example, may have an effect on properties or golf or charter clubs, or even, even with what you're doing, Jolene, Director Pyoskovsky as well. Sorry about that.
I know, we're all stumbling with this.
I know, I try to, try to make more formal. So is it, is it, does it make sense that we kind of agree to try to get all of our redlines together and submit them at one time to legal? So as they're going through it, they're looking at all the policies at all the policies in consideration for the changes we're making, so that we don't end up with must in this document and shall in that document, or things like that?
They'll make sure that that's, it's one person who's reviewing. So there will be consistencies in that type of verbiage, yes, no matter when they go in. But just as a reminder, we talked about this in our workshop last week. Our next workshop is going to be the place where we will discuss how we want to handle the overall process of policy review, whether we want to endeavor, once we go through the content review that we're all looking at right now, making sure that there isn't anything that's not serving the best interests of our association, and then decide, looking more deliberately at an end-to-end view is something that we, as a board, will consider. We started talking about this at the workshop last week, didn't quite land on what we wanted to do next, just know, directors and residents, that we will be bringing that up in an entire end-to-end review. It's certainly come up in Budget and Finance for the past 18 months or so, it's been under discussion, and I know the board has discussed it as well. So we'll have that greater discussion at our workshop, and make a decision on how we want to proceed forward. Did I answer your question?
Not exactly. I think what I heard you say is that we're going to follow the current path until after we make a new path, but that Jolene, Director Pajaskowski, should take her redlines and take them to legal, and we should go through that route.
If, we can hold off on having legal review them, I'm saying, I don't honestly see any value in doing that. Legal does a fine job of ensuring there's consistency across what's being submitted to them. Would there be any benefit to holding all of our changes and doing one review at one time? There might be, and I don't think it would slow down dramatically. So if we want to just review the redlines as they are without legal, I'd be fine with that. Can we take that point, since it does not require a motion, but it's more just a structural process for us as a governing board? Could we, I don't even know if I want to look at our parliamentarian right now, but I am going to make sure that I'm not too far afield from Robert's rules at this moment, please. We're, I believe we are at ease for the moment, which means we're not at recess. I'm just going to ask our parliamentarian a quick clarifying question, so stay where you are, please.
I'm going to do mine. I'm going to just do mine.
All right, we're back from being at ease. I think I used those words correctly. My Robert's Rules police will tell me later. But our parliamentarians said I was fine, and there we go. So what we're going to do here is, well, Jolene and I will work out separately when and how we'll submit to legal, and then, again, we will have our discussion on the overall end-to-end review, or lack thereof. We'll do that at our next. So we'll hold off for the time being, Director Becknell.
Thank you.
Any other, any other que, oh, yes, Director Pajaskowski has a comment on her original idea.
Overall, mine are way easier than any of yours. So, when I bring mine to the workshop, it will be easy-peasy, and then it can go to legal. But you guys, you're on your own.
The Budget and Finance policies are numerous, very detailed, for those of you who follow along with those. And the other policies that are similarly complex in some areas are our facilities policies under property. So there are a couple of those that are cropping up for review as well, so, point well taken. Thank you again, Director Pajaskowski. Director Graham, Golf Committee?
Thank you, President Novello. For the Golf Committee, we met Thursday of last week, and during that meeting, we accomplished a number of things. Echo Mesa, after being closed for a number of months, will be opening. The irrigation work has been completed, the turf reduction work has been completed, and it's created new desert areas. So, with that in mind, we took a look at the current no-play zone, which is a local rule in place at Grandview, that was put in place after the work had been done there, and the board, excuse me, the committee is recommending to golf operations, which is already implementing, that the no-play zone, a temporary local rule, will be put in place at Echo Mesa for the upcoming year. And we will also be canceling the temporary rule at Grandview. So, the new desert area at Echo Mesa, you don't play out of it, and you don't drive your carts over it. It's just a way to protect it, to allow the vegetation to begin to grow without getting too disturbed. So that's the first action. The next two things we did was, we actually formed two working groups. We reviewed all nine of our policies, seven of them we have no changes to. Two of them, Policy G04, Use of Powered Golf Vehicles, in its current state, it only addresses that such golf carts and things can be used on our golf courses. What it doesn't look at is the fact that people now drive some pretty big golf carts around here, these four-passenger golf carts. And so this working group has formed to look at putting some size, weight, tire-type limits on those golf carts, because we don't want those carts damaging the grass even further. The other working group will cover G10, which is the non-resident play for golf and public player carts. We currently have a frequent public player card that's in our spreadsheet for golf fees. And what this is, the non-members can buy a card for $1,600 for the whole year, and it gets some greens fees at significantly reduced rates. We're going to look at presently this year, we've got, I think about nine people have purchased that card. If they really are frequent golfers, then at some point, they're playing golf for cheaper than our members. So the committee will look at, or, excuse me, the working group will look at, is that something we really want to continue? For nine players, people who don't live here, actually playing golf for cheaper than what we pay for it. So that is our first working group, we'll take a look at that. The second working group is, we're going to take a look at the parameters for developing a study on what the people that live here want to see on our golf courses. This year, the Golf Committee really has committed to the idea that we are a premier golf community. So what needs to be done to our golf courses to actually get them in better condition, if that's what the people want? So this study will just initially analyze, do we really need to do a study, and will it produce the kind of results that we're looking for? So both of those committees, I'm working on a charter, I will put together a written charter, submit it to the board within the next week or so. That'll lay out the purpose of both committees, and the timelines that they'll be operating. And then the last thing will be, today at 1:00, we're only doing one golf course tour this year. Today at 1:00, from 1:00 to 3:00 p.m., we'll begin our tour at Grandview, move over to Echo Mesa, and conclude at Stardust. So that is the one tour that the Golf Committee will be going on, and everybody else in the community is welcome to come along, because we're going to have Mr. Todd Paddy with us, and Pat O'Hara, who will be pointing out certain things at all three golf courses. And we especially want to get a look at Echo Mesa, after all the work that was done this past year, to see where these new desert areas are, and how the new sprinkler system will ensure that we have green grass everywhere. So, thank you very much.
Thanks, Director Graham. Couple of quick questions for you. First of all, as you mentioned, you want to form a couple of working groups, just so that the board's aware. We'll see the working group charter at our November workshop, so that'll be where we look at it, if you will, and have any comments. One of the comments that I had, that you're aware of, we talked about it, in terms of the survey, that seems, that could, if not structured properly, that could duplicate or, you know, make, you know, over additional secondary work beyond the strategic plan initiatives, and even some of the master plan that's kicking off shortly. Has your committee, I didn't hear direct communication about this, how is your committee going to resolve or work with staff on ensuring that we don't duplicate efforts there?
Well, basically, the working group is just looking at the feasibility of actually doing a survey. You know, what type of questions do we need to ask to be of any benefit to us? So that's really going to be their initial charter, just to determine if we want to do a survey, and we'll take it forward from there.
So we'll take a look at the working group charter then, and that might answer some of the questions that I had about, in that area. Any questions from others? Any questions from the community?
Alan.
Oh, Alan, I'm sorry. I'm looking in the other direction. So Director Schlemmer?
Thank you, President Novello. I don't know if this would be more appropriate, if the workshop were here, I'm going to put it out, not for a whole lot of discussion, but it is something I do want to encourage us to think about. As we think about a study for our golf courses, and as we think about evaluation of the need to make improvements or whatever, and the thought of it being a premier golf community, I would encourage us to keep in mind that 70% of our residents live here but do not golf. And I don't say that because they're anti-golf or whatever, I happen to be one of those 70%, and I love our golf courses. But I would encourage us to make sure that in whatever study we're doing, or whatever analysis we're doing, we're also considering the viewpoints and perspectives of all of our residents, because those golf courses are an asset to all of us. They affect our home values, they affect the aesthetics of the community, and so forth. So as your committee thinks about a study, I would encourage you not to just limit it to the 30% or so who actually drive out and play on the golf courses, but let's make sure we're also including the viewpoints across the entire community.
And again, thanks for the input to the Golf Committee, and remember, too, the strategic plan, that's what, I carry this with me everywhere I go, it's available for all of us on our website as well. The strategic plan already lays out some of this, and the master plan certainly will. And that was the reason why I wasn't sure how much time or effort was really warranted, but, again, we'll review that in more detail when we come to the. What I don't want to do is hear later that, because we're undertaking in all good faith, we want to do the right thing as a golf community, but then we're stepping in the way of achieving our strategic plan initiatives, or something that's already underway. So we just need to ensure that we're not overlapping, or the work's not already underway, in my view, but. Anything else? And this time, I'll look at all the directors, rather than just looking. I know, no favorites, no favorites, my head's on a swivel. And any, any questions from residents in the room? Then thank you, Director Graham, and we'll look for more great information. Director Turner, I know that you didn't even know you were going to be on the agenda, but just since all the other committees had something, I also wanted to hear, although no motions and no policies, per se, you guys have a big task with RR&amp;Ps, so.
We do, and that's one of three things that the Charter Clubs Committee must do every year, is review the RR&amp;Ps, and so you won't be surprised to hear that we formed a working group to have a look at those. They've met several times, they're meeting approximately weekly, sometimes on several couple of weeks, and we'll get a report back at our November meeting on progress so far, on looking at those RR&amp;Ps. They've been meeting with staff, there's some more meetings with staff, and others to come up, to make sure that anything that is recommended is, you know, they're not going to recommend something which staff would say, oh, we can't do that, or we can't enforce that, or, and such other things. One of our, the second thing we have to do every year is to look at the capital requests for new items that have come in from charter clubs, and then make a recommendation to the general manager and the governing board as to whether those items should be added into the list for further work. And if we make that recommendation, and that recommendation is accepted, they will then appear in the capital list for discussion later on during the course of the year. And our third task is then to review that list as well, which includes the R&amp;R items for charter clubs, and we'll be doing that in January, February timeframe, as usual. The Charter Clubs Committee members act as liaisons for the charter clubs, so if you're a club president, you should have already heard from your liaison about setting up a meeting, coming to have a chat. If you haven't heard already, you will be hearing soon. And I recommend, even if you believe, and it is the case, that your club is running smoothly, there are no issues, everything's going okay, I would still recommend that you meet with the liaison. It brings information about your club and how your club's working, and it just adds into the data and the experience of the people on the Charter Clubs Committee, so that it helps us make more informed recommendations. Most of the Charter Clubs Committee members, as they were able, have been on the property tours, which have been organized by the Properties Committee as they do, and that will help us with the R&amp;R work in January and February, because the committee members have been physically looked at those places. And finally, the tennis club has asked for our support and recommendation for the USTA tournament, and we've made a vote and a recommendation on that, but I won't say any more, because that's the next item on the agenda, and that's it.
Thank you, Director Turner. Any questions? All right, lots of great stuff happening with all of our committees, those are our standing committees, we also have our specials as well, so, again, great updates from all, thank you so much. Like all of our working groups, the working group on RR&amp;Ps, and all the working groups that are being formed for residents' awareness, those don't have to be technically by Arizona statutes, they don't have to be open meetings, but we make them open, and we do post them for awareness on our governing board hub. So, just so you're aware, they are there, you are, you will have the ability to see when those meetings are taking place, and if you have some input or want to observe, you are able to do so. Just know that the working groups, it's a working session, so it's not one that's an open forum, you can observe if you wish. It's all there for transparency. Thanks again, Director Turner. Move on to 3.08, and back into your hands, Director Turner, about that tournament.
Yes, we'll kick off any discussion by proposing the motion. I move that the governing board approve hosting of the 2027 Southwestern United States Tennis Association sectional tournament by the Sun City West Club, Tennis Club.
And do I have a second? Director Schlemmer was the first to raise his hand, so thank you so much. And we've had, there were presentations made at the workshop on the 10th, and of course, at the Charter Clubs Committee, but could you just give us a one-minute explanation, Director Turner?
Yes, this tournament is organized by the USTA, not organized and managed by the club, and because of that, the approval needs to come through the governing board, and just can't be approved in the normal way, which would be by the general manager and recreation manager. We had the presentation at the Charter Clubs Committee, and we recommended approval of it, and we had, you know, the presentation and questions at the governing board meeting, at the workshop last week. It is a good advertisement, a good marketing opportunity for Sun City West. It's an ability to show off the superb tennis facility that we have here, and it's also a seniors tournament, it's a regional seniors tournament. So the people who are taking part in this tournament will be seniors who live in the southwestern United States, Arizona, New Mexico, I believe, parts of Nevada, and so on. So it is also our target demographic that will be coming in here. So there'd be tennis players who are qualified to live in Sun City West, coming in to play a tournament on a superb tennis facility. And of course, given the location of that facility within Sun City West, they also have an opportunity to look at the bowling alley, the mini golf, the bocce, the lawn bowling, you know, the RX Johnson pool. So if they're just hanging around in our community for a day or two days, then they have an opportunity to have a good look around.
It seems like a great opportunity. Any, and again, there was, we don't have to repeat it all, any questions or comments? We'll start on the side if there are any, anything from Director Becknell?
No questions.
Schlemmer?
I will make a very quick comment, I spoke during the workshop, but I want to share with you a true story about the impact that these types of events have. I was working at the museum during the days that the lawn bowling had the tournament there, and as you know, that was hosted between both here and our community. And as you know, that was hosted between both here and our community down the road, Sun City. And we had a whole group of folks show up at the museum, and they wanted to get more about the history of the communities and so forth. They were telling us how impressed they were and all of that. They were here for the tournament. So these things really work. That's all I'll say. Thank you.
Excellent. Anything else? Directors Chatten, Graham, Director Pajaskowski? Just echoing, it seems like a wonderful opportunity to show off the very best 55-plus community that you can find anywhere in Arizona, and certainly one of the best in the country. So with that, any questions from our residents here in the room? Comments? No comments online, so we'll put it to a vote. We'll start a quick roll call with you, Director Turner.
Yes.
Director Pajaskowski?
I do declare that I am a tennis member, just so everyone knows, but I am saying yes, because what Alan just said.
And that's all a director has to do very well. Thank you very much, Director Pajaskowski. Director Graham?
Yes.
Director Chatten?
Yes.
Director Schlemmer?
Yes.
And Director Becknell?
Yes.
And Director Forsey?
Yes.
Excellent. Unanimous. Congratulations. We look forward to hosting the 2027 USTA Regional Tournament. We'll move on then to item 3.09. We started talking about this revised policy. This is a revision for policy M01. So we'll kick off... We started talking about this a little bit last week, and we'll kick the discussion off with a motion, please. I'll turn this to Director Schlemmer.
Thank you, President Novello. And not being a committee chair, I'm so excited to get to do a motion. I'll say that as a side note. A little levity. I move that the governing board approves the engross language revisions to membership policy M01, membership and activity cards for facility use as redlined.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Director Chatten, seconds. So Director Schlemmer, you are not the author of this. Shall we turn it over? This really came up, was proposed as a change that came through our staff, so Stephen, I believe it would be Cliff that would be speaking to these, right? Cliff?
Okay, yeah, the change here essentially is to tie a rec center activity card for an underage property owner member to a age-qualified resident of the household, and we would require that the age-qualified resident of the household also be a dues-paying rec card holder. And the way the current policy reads is more aligned with being able to reside in the community as an underage person, but doesn't really address the rec facilities themselves, because they're two separate things. Owner members can own and be underage. They have voting rights as owner members, but they don't have facility use rights. The only time they become... Or residency rights, even. They can be a resident by having an age qualifier in the home, but to be a rec card holder, we're changing the policy so that the age qualifier also be a dues-paying rec card holder, and that would be an associate member.
If I may ask someone who is at the back of the room, could you please present or move to the PDF for us and scroll down to the relevant section? So how does this section actually achieve some of those goals, if you could?
So the... Basically, what we're stating is previously this said that underage owners shall not have access to the facilities unless they reside with an age-qualified resident. We're adding that this also... This is also an owner member of the same residential unit, or an associate member in good standing. So meaning they're paying actual dues, they're not just living in the residence as an age qualifier, but that they're actually a dues-paying member as an age qualifier.
So we had some discussion about this at last week's workshop. Anybody have any questions that you'd like to have Cliff answer in terms of the nature of these changes? Any concerns or questions? Director Pajaskowski?
Practically, how many owners are we dealing with? Do you have any idea? Riley?
Fifty.
About fifty?
Riley says about fifty.
So I was just making sure. We have 50 residents that are underage, but they have qualifying people that live, so they can live there, and then they can use their rec card, correct? The owner member.
Yes, that's really a rough number. We really don't know.
Right, I mean, but...
But we're just...
So, and we're just trying to make sure that we have the qualifier have an associate.
Yeah, so the age qualifier allows the underage owner...
To use the rec card.
No, they actually... It allows them to live here. It doesn't allow them to use the rec card based on this change. That that owner, that age qualifier that lives in the house, allows the underage homeowner to live in the community, per bylaws. What we're stating is that if that underage person wants to use the rec facilities, that their age qualifier also pay dues.
Correct.
And attach it to those dues...
Right, that's what I...
A dues-paying age qualifier.
Right, so right now, you can be underage, or you can be 19-plus, have a 55-year-old living in your home, but that underage cannot use our rec card. Am I correct?
No, they can't.
Because... Oh, they can.
Yes, they can currently. So what we're trying to do is make that age-qualified person an actual dues-paying member, not just the fact that they're 55 and older and living in the house.
Okay. It sounds like this is the... May not be a problem, per se, now, but it's a loophole.
It is, yes. And what we're seeing is more and more extended families in the community, because it's becoming more expensive to own a home, and it's becoming more expensive, not only for the younger generation to own a home, but also the older generation to own a home. So we just want to make sure that we're protecting the community, protecting the facilities, and that they're being used in the way that they were intended to be used by owner members and people paying dues.
And in this particular case, I know we had a robust discussion a little while ago, but in this particular case, you did already reach out for legal review, because there was some question about whether or not this was possible in the statute.
Yes, so fortunately, Article 2 in the bylaws really defers to M01 for the policies on facilities use. So facilities use, we have control over that, and we have the ability to make this policy, because the bylaw itself refers to M01 when it comes to the policy, the policies around facilities use.
Director Schlemmer?
I just want to point out the second part of this as well, because we do have occasions where a surviving spouse may be underage, and they currently are allowed to remain a rec center member and remain a resident of their house, even without an age qualifier in the house, because they are a surviving spouse. And my understanding is this policy change is not going to impact any of those situations now or going forward.
Actually, that's a great point, because in the bylaw, in Article 2, it specifically states that the surviving spouse could not only can just live in the community, but they can also have rights to the facilities. And it's the only area in the bylaw where it calls out the facilities. Otherwise, it points to M01 as the guidelines around facilities use.
Thank you. That was my understanding.
So none of this proposed change, that's highlighted in yellow and red, none of these proposed changes impact that at all?
Right, doesn't touch it.
Yes.
Great. Anything else? Director Graham?
Yeah, I've got a few comments. As I see it, as you stated, Mr. Swan, the requirements to live here are in Section 2 of the bylaws. And as they currently read, such persons, that's an underage owner, such persons are not authorized to reside in the residential unit unless there is a resident residing therein who is at least 55 years of age. No one under 19 years of age may reside here. So that is a current restriction per the HOPA, Housing for Older Persons Act. So that says this underage person can live here as long as there simply is a 55 and over living there. They don't have to be an associate member.
Exactly.
Then you go into Section 2.05, which is the privileges and rights. None of that is addressed in that section, what we're adding here. So I see this as we are adding an additional requirement or restriction on an underage owner, that they have to live with an associate member. And the other problem, and that conflicts when you look up the definition of an associate member, because that's an elective choice that resident can make. In this case, the associate... The resident is no longer has the option of not being an associate member. So I see that as a potential conflict, and it just... I think we're creating a problem that we don't need to create, and I don't know, and you said it might not even be 50, so are we accomplishing anything by doing this?
I'm in... Personally, I'm in favor of anything that's going to continue to protect our community and protect its... The way that we currently operate as a 55-plus predominant community, we obviously don't want to put our community at risk. Believe legal reviewed that, and did they... They've already addressed this, am I correct?
Yes, they reviewed the proposed changes and came back... Wordsmithed it a little bit, but this was what they came back with. And, yeah, so it's our stance that the... Again, that the exceptions or the ability for an underage person to live in the community is different than the ability of an underage member to use the facilities.
Right.
They're two separate things. So case in point, an underage person is a rec card holder, is a member, but is not a rec card holder. So they have owner privileges. They can vote, they can own the property. It doesn't entitle them to use the facilities. It currently doesn't entitle them to use the facilities. So we're stating what those stipulations are right now. And that's what we're doing. We're not saying they can't live in there, and we're not saying they're not an owner member. We're just saying that if they're going to use the facilities, yes.
And again, the council, when they do these reviews, they look at compliance with statute. They also look at our bylaws and anything else that they can look at, and these are in alignment. What I saw come back is that this is all in alignment with both our bylaws, and did you see that as well?
Yes.
Director Graham?
Just one more thing then. To be very clear, with this change, an underage owner could live here with a resident, and if the resident over 55 doesn't have a rec card, then the underage owner does not have facility privileges. You're not saying they can't live here.
Correct.
They can live here...
Yes.
But the... Without having that second card on that property, they are denied the use of the facilities, although by definition, they are an owner member. And if you go back to the definition of an owner member, they have the use of the facilities. So I see that as a conflict.
Yeah, it's similar to tenants. Tenants have to be tied to a member, a dues-paying member card, and if there aren't enough dues-paying members, then they have to purchase a landlord card and tie it to that card. So it's very similar to that, and those are all laid out in the policies. And when you look at the member types in the bylaws, each title says, "Refer to M01 for facilities use." Each one of them says that.
Concerns and risks are noted. Anything else, though, Director Brown, that you wanted to add? So questions from... We'll get to resident questions in just a moment. Any other directors have a question?
Sometimes the small... You think it's a small change, and it really does open up a lot of potential risk. We have to look at all of these things. So again, thank you. So we have a resident in the room.
So we'll be able to track this. But you did shake your head no a moment ago, correct? I'm not losing it completely.
But we do have a way to track this, right? I mean, Riley has how many people are owner underage, and that... I mean, they have to sign the affidavit or whatever, that HOPA thing, right?
This is the only way we can track it, honestly. If they come in, they want to use our recreation centers, this is the only way to capture it. Otherwise, we can't track it, yes.
Okay. I think it's a good idea.
Thanks. I didn't mean to look the other way, so I'll look again three times. So now to our resident questions. Thank you so much. Introduce your name and rec card number, please.
Lynn Holly, number 136942. And I just want clarification on an associate member. Is that like a snowbird, someone who lives here and is part-time?
No, an associate member is... May I answer that?
Yes, you may.
Okay. An associate member is someone who lives in the household, who's a member of the household and lives there for at least six months. That's an associate member. That's all you need to be. So you don't need to be on the title of the house, and you have member privileges as an associate member. You pay dues.
And all of the membership types are laid out in our bylaws policies, so these are... It may sound a little... This way, someone who's living there is not on the deed, still has that opportunity to...
So then, how can someone who's not 55, who's less than 55 years old, be a homeowner then?
Because you can own property here. You can own the property. You can't live here without having this age qualifier. That's the... So anyone who... We can't preclude anyone from buying the property. It's who lives here is... That's within our...
Okay. I just want to clarify.
Good question.
Thank you. We do have a question online, but are there any other residents in the room with a question Thank you. I'll introduce yourself by name and rec card number. Thanks.
My name's DeLynn Langley, 404415. I currently am an associate member, because when I moved into the community, my husband and I weren't married yet, so that will be changing. Hopefully, that explains...
Congratulations.
Thank you. But hopefully, that explains that for the question that was asked as well. So my... This is kind of confusing. So my question is, let's use a 19-year-old who is now going to have a rec card opportunity. We never like to say this, but something happens to that 55-plus individual, and they're no longer in the home. What does that mean as far as that person now, they have all these rights? So what does that mean for them?
And in this scenario, it's always difficult to answer some of the hypotheticals, right? So you're saying, what would happen to the person if it's the surviving spouse, or just someone who was living there, a partner?
Well, I'm guessing that if they're 19, they could possibly be a child of the resident as well.
Could be. That's true. I just wanted to make sure that we understood the question. So the rights of the surviving spouse are clear, and they're spelled out here and elsewhere, but I'll defer to you, Cliff, on the rest.
Unless that 19-year-old was a surviving spouse, which... Yeah, yeah. Otherwise, that person would not have rights to live here.
Okay, even including this rec card change?
Yes, correct.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
It can be very complicated, but we have a question from online that I think is also going to touch on some of this, but let's... This is from Mary Gaynett, 133113. So if the underage homeowner has someone over 55 living with them, they can both use the facilities, question mark? Who tracks it if the 55-year-old moves out, and who enforces that? I believe you touched on it, but once again, please.
Yes, so we have really no way of telling if an age qualifier becomes deceased, other than when the... At the time, the dues had to be renewed, they have to sign an affidavit, the age qualifier. So it may take us a few months to get there, but that's how we would find that out. out. And to clarify, the last thing Alan made a clarifying point to me, and that is that the 19-year-old could still be a homeowner, they just can't live in the community in that scenario. So they would be an owner member, they couldn't live, reside in the community.
Yeah, sorry to be late with the comment, but I've just been scanning through the bylaws as we've been talking. Director Graham is correct in that the choice as to whether you are an associate member or not, it's not required. You can make the choice to be an associate member. If we make this policy change, that means that if the, if the 55-plus qualifier chooses not to become an associate member, then the owner members cannot use the facilities. Yeah. So it's still a choice, but you know.
It is still a choice.
There are implications if you make that choice.
Right. That's, that must be, I would presume that that would be the reason why it would, it's in alignment with bylaws and law. Thanks for clarifying. Any other comments, questions from directors? I know I have to look head on a swivel. We do have another question coming from a resident in the room.
My name is, my name is Pete Decker, 139918. I don't understand why we are restricting underage people from living in one of our homes, but we allow them to buy a home. It just doesn't make sense to me.
Well, we can't dictate who purchases the properties. We can, though, through our association, decide who has the right to use the facilities. So that's where, in terms of the ability to live here, our bylaws are very clear that you need to have, be living 19 and over and living with someone who is 55 years of old, years of age and older, correct?
But is this a federal law or something that we're dealing with?
Yes. Yes.
So we have to allow, excuse me, underage people to purchase, but we can restrict them from living?
That's correct.
Okay.
Can I, hold on, just because there, like, sounds like 10 people who want to answer the question. So Cliff, did you want to respond first or before we go?
I'll defer to Director Schlemmer, if that's okay with you.
Fine with me. Yes, Director Schlemmer, and then we'll go to Director Pajaskowski.
So I'm not a lawyer by any stretch, or I'm not going to profess to be a huge expert, but we follow the, the federal law on housing for older persons. There's a lot of reasons why an underage person might buy a home here and either not live in it or live in it with, with a person over 55. And the biggest example is adult children who buy a home for mom and dad, so that mom and dad can retire affordably and live in the house here. So they would be underage, they have every right to buy that home, and then they have every right to allow mom and dad, over age 55, to move in. Or an adult child who decides that he's going to support mom and dad by they all move into a home together. So he or she is under 55, but buys the home and then lets mom and dad live with them. So you would have that scenario. The other scenario is an investor coming in, you know, some, some of our homes are older stock, and so you see flippers coming in, buying them, and then reselling them. And obviously, we want that, because it helps stimulate home sales and also brings home values up, because they rehab the homes into a more expensive home. Those buyers tend to also frequently be under age 55, and again, won't be living in the home. But it ultimately all falls back, the right for it to happen all falls back to the federal law regarding the housing for older persons. And really, what that focuses on is residency. And residency being, you have to have at least one resident over 55.
Thank you for that explanation. While I'm here at the podium, if I could ask one other question or comment I have about the tennis tournament, going back to that.
Actually, sir, if, I'm so sorry to make you do it, but no, we're only taking questions on this topic at the moment, but we, you're welcome to come back to the microphone at the end of the meeting. So if you could hold that for a moment.
Sure.
Thank you so much. We have one more online, so I'll read that one out. And that is a follow-up question from our owner, Mary Gaynett. When the associate member is due to renew their card, can't we also check at that time to ensure the over 55 is still also an active member? Yes. So, and I believe it sounds to me that this proposed change would enable the staff to have a little bit more ability to check, right, to follow through on that. So the answer is yes, and it will, the proposed change adds to that. Any other questions from our residents? Directors? All right, so we're going to go back to the motion then. Back to you, Director Schlemmer. And thank you, Cliff.
Okay. I gotta fight it again here. I move that the governing board approve the ingross language revisions to membership policy M01, membership and activity cards for facility use as redlined.
Thank you. So we'll vote again by roll call. We'll start with Director Becknell, please.
Approved.
Director Schlemmer?
Yes.
Chatten?
Yes.
Graham?
No.
Pajaskowski?
Yes.
And Turner?
Yes.
Director Forsey?
Yes.
Thank you. The motion passes 6 to 1. Moving on now to item 3.10. This, we will turn to Director Chatten, so that we can set a date for our upcoming governing board elections.
Thank you, President Novello. I move that the governing board approve the March 30th, 2026, governing board in-person voting day slash election date.
Do I have a second? Director Pajaskowski, seconds. And again, I don't, I don't believe there's an awful lot of explanation here, but thank you, Director Chatten, for making the motion. The, we sometimes forget, frankly, to do this, but it's an important note that the governing board does approve the state. The state was recommended to us from the elections committee. So any comments, questions, or concerns from the committee, from the board, excuse Any questions from our residents? And I see nothing online. So again, if you could just reread that motion for us, Director Chatten?
Certainly. I move that the governing board approve the March 30th, 2026, governing board in-person voting day election date.
Excellent. We will start our voting this time with Director Forsey.
Yes.
Thank you. Director Turner?
Yes.
Pajaskowski?
Yes.
Graham?
Yes.
Chatten?
Yes.
Schlemmer?
Yes.
And Becknell?
Yes.
Excellent. So we are unanimous. The governing board election date for 2026 will be, the in-person date in the completion will be March 30th, 2026. There'll be more details coming up, and we look forward to seeing many of our residents take up the challenge of pursuing a board seat next year. We'll move on now to section four. We have some report filings. So back to you, Director Becknell.
Thank you, Director Novello. I make the motion that the financial, 2024 to 2025, end of year financials have been reviewed and accepted by the budget and finance committee. They have been filed.
Excellent. Thank you. No more, no, there's no board action required for that. We'll move on to item 4.02, please.
The motion that the financial year 2024 to 2025, Clifton Larson Allen Annual Audit Report was reviewed by the budget and finance committee at its October 14th, 2025 committee meeting. The annual audit report has been reviewed and accepted by the governing board and will be filed.
Thank you. Once again, no action there, as noted previously. Once we have the fully executed copies of that report, Director Becknell, if you could let us know that that's available, and directors can know where to go and obtain a copy of that or a printout. Thank you so much. All right, we are moving down now into board director comments. So we'll start this time with Director Forsey. Again, we're sorry that you're not here with us in person. Do you have any comments or questions that you'd like to share?
No, I think everyone's done a great job in articulating and explaining, and it was a good meeting. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Safe travels. Director Graham?
No comment.
Thank you. And Director Chatten?
Nothing more to be said.
Director Schlemmer?
I do have a very quick comment, as you would have expected. He can't shut up. You know, last month at our board meeting in September, I mentioned that I wanted to use these comments as an opportunity to highlight some of the great things that the clubs and organizations around our community do, to help the greater and larger community. And I got a very nice note from the president of the Spanish club, and it's several pages, so I'm not going to go through all of it. But there are a couple of things I really want to highlight that I thought they were doing that's pretty cool. They have a program that they help an underfunded public kindergarten in Los Algondones, Mexico, and I know I just butchered that, I apologize. They provide things like computers, they worked with the computer club here to assist in that, and also school supplies. And through their efforts, they were able to link that school to the internet for the very first time. Isn't that cool? They also partnered with the Kansas City Royals, and that role is they go and help some of the younger ballplayers learn to speak English. Apparently, there is a bit of a language barrier, and they assist them in teaching them the English language. And the third thing, they call this program, all of these three programs together, they call it the cultural bridge. And the third element of it is, they work with the Dice Art Center, a fantastic facility over here, I believe it's actually in El Mirage. They work teaching folks English as a second language. And as a result of that, they have been able to help several of their attendees gain citizenship into the United States as well as complete their GED. Fantastic work by our Spanish club. That is all my comments.
Thanks for sharing that. I really appreciate it, Director Schlemmer. Director Becknell?
Well, as a lifelong member from Kansas City, I got to say, yay Royals! Glad to see they're supporting the teams, and thank you for that response. No other comments.
Thank you. Director Turner?
Just two comments. I was at the Lizard Acres grand reopening. Oh, sorry. And. And that's all I'm going to say. It, it, it looks, it looks good. It's definitely worth a visit. And the other thing is, I had breakfast this morning at the Pavilion Grill, and I, on the recommendation of a couple of people who've been there, I had the blueberry pancakes. And I agree, they are very, very good.
Hope there's not going to be a brawl breaking out down here. Director Pajaskowski?
Okay, so Lizard Acres opened on Tuesday. We had a crowd like no other. It was great to see. The other thing is, you all saw my t-shirts, so we are selling t-shirts and hats. I'm not too sure if they're going to be at Lizard Acres or where you can buy them, but that night, they did sell them. And the same night, we had a lot of residents attend, and they also ordered food from the grill and brought it into the pub to eat. So let's support both. I thank you so much.
Thank you, and thanks for showing out the merchandise. I believe that's available in the sports pavilion, am I correct?
Yeah, so we're still working on where that's going to be physically housed, but whether it's going to be in the, in the Lizard Acres or at the counter. Space is the problem right now, but we're trying to work through that and figure out where that's going to be.
Thank you. And, and yeah, I have to say, it was, it was a very fun event. If you haven't had a chance to check out the new, newly redesigned Lizard Acres, do that. It's a real fun upgrade and our sports pub, if you will. So enjoy. It was great to meet so many of you, and it was really great to see so many smiling faces as well. And many of us were able to be there, so we're glad to that. And on the same notion, we also have, our staff is hard at work, coming up with all kinds of fun, new events. We've had events at the pool, all kinds of interesting little pop-ups and so forth. So there's one coming up as well. We heard you talk, well, a few folks have talked about the newcomers welcome open house next week on the 22nd. And even if you're not new to Sun City West, you always learn something new and see your friends and pick up some new information. So I hope we see you there. There's another, in terms of more, you know, it's a social event, there's a pop-up party that's being planned. Pop-up party, wow, that is a mouthful in the morning, but November the 12th, thank you, Stephen, for giving me the specifics here. November the 12th, 2 to 4, it'll be over in the Great Lawn Facility. That's where we'll have, there's some concerts that go on there, a couple of grills in the back. Stephen's hard at work getting a food handler's license, from what I understand, but seriously, there'll be some, there'll be cornhole, cornhole, there'll be some mini golf, bocce, there'll be music, games, and some hot dogs and food. And it's all complimentary while supplies last. And of course, the big attraction is that the governing board will be there. No, a couple of, a couple of the directors will be there walking around. I know. See, actually, I had proposed we have a dunk tank, and somehow that might attract, but seriously, some of the directors will be there. We look forward to engaging more with you, hearing more about what's on your mind, and enjoying some hot dogs with you. So kind of putting that out there as well. So that, that's it for the board director comments. Stephen, to you, general manager comments.
Thank you, President Novello. So as you mentioned, yes, I'll be getting, I was roped into grilling the hot dogs, and I'm happy to do it. I just didn't realize it went along with, I've got to do apparently a sit-through, I don't know how many hours of food handling, but that's okay. I know, I know. It's all aligned, but it's a thing. That's okay. But I'm happy to do it, looking forward to that event, it should be a lot of fun. And then I just want to piggyback on the Lizard Acres and just really acknowledge the team for making that happen. So Carl and Russ were a big part of that, of really, at the 11th hour, getting everything accomplished so we could get the necessary permits from the county and make that happen. And even beyond them, the whole team came together, Sabrina, Casey, Katie, we had a little, we had, they all helped out to make sure that was a success. Gary was there, of course. But really, because there's a lot of details that took place in order to make that happen. And the merchandise was a big hit, from my understanding, and we're going to continue to have that available for purchase. And the change in the logo, you know, that, that actually came from a resident suggestion, and we were super happy to have that. And I think that came over as, as a well-received item as well. Turned out really nice on stickers and hats and t-shirts. So come on out, if you haven't yet already, to the Lizard Acres. It's a, it's a great place, and, and you know, it was fun before, but I think it's even more inviting now, and I hope folks really enjoy that. I'm super proud of it. And again, thank you to all of the team for making that happen. It was, it was a lot of work behind the scenes.
And while you're there, grab some food at the Pavilion Grill.
Yes.
While we're advertising.
Yes, yes, yes. And certainly go to the Pavilion Grill for their fine food, because they've been doing really, really well. And they, they are thrilled to have that back open as well, so that partnership with them is going really fantastic, frankly. They've really stepped up and are anxious to be a part of the community and doing a great job with that. So again, come on out, great stuff, and hope everybody enjoys it.
Wonderful. I know it's time now for resident comments, so I asked somebody to sit down a moment ago. I think you had a question, sir, about the tournament, so if you want to come up, or if there are any other questions or comments, this would be the time for those. While he's doing that, one, one last reminder, since we heard about, we just voted on the upcoming date, remember, we are rapidly approaching governing board election season, which I cannot believe it's come around again. But November 1st is the official kickoff. You can start picking up your materials on November 3rd. There are sections on the Sun City West website where you can go to start getting some more information. So hopefully, you'll be inspired to want to throw your hat in the ring to serve your community and serve on the governing board next year. So that being said, now, sir, your question?
Yeah, thank you. I'm still Pete Decker, 139918.
Well, thank goodness you haven't changed. Thank you, Mr. Decker.
Yeah, just a question about the proposal for the tennis tournament that proposing to hold here in Sun City West. Is there any, going to be any costs involved to us to? Is there going to be any costs involved to us to put on that tournament?
When we've asked in the past, the costs were pretty negligible, as I recall. I think we'll be doing some of the cleanup, and the opportunity is there for sponsorship, but more to come in terms of the specifics.
And USTA as well does give us an allowance, so there is...it's a four-figure number. It depends upon how many people enter the tournament, but the number, I'm looking at Joel in the audience here, but the number I've been given is somewhere between $1,500 and $2,500 will be paid by the USTA for the privilege of hosting it here.
Very good, very good. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Any other questions or comments from our residents? Well, then, wonderful. With that, I'm happy to call this meeting to a conclusion. Our next governing board workshop is on November the 7th at 9:00 a.m. right here in this lecture hall and on YouTube. And our next regular meeting will be held on November 20th. Again, same logistics here in the lecture hall and livestreamed on YouTube. With that, it's 10:46, and we're adjourned.